2023 regular board meeting, we'll call this meeting to order. First stand by standing up and saying applause allegiance.
Applaud allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you for joining us tonight and welcome. Alicia Williams with us tonight, first meeting, so welcome, Alicia. Yeah, and we'll get started here. Administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp via email, the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demmer Library. And the media notified via email included the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, thank you for that. And next we go to amendments and approval of agenda or amendments.
There are no amendments.
All right, so I'll seek motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Approving minutes of the March 15th, 2023 regular meeting. Some prepared to make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Anyone have any other further comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next we go to approve vouchers slash check register for the period of March 10th, 2023 through April 11th, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated March 10th, 2023 through April 11th, 2023 for accounts payable, checks number 222-300-206 through 222-300-245, regular checks number 127937 through 128036, with voided checks 127802 and 127866, and manual checks number 5442 through 5454 in the amount of $610,596.42. And ACH payroll checks number 9000-39851 through 9000-40104, and regular payroll checks number 59284 through 59287 in the amount of $314,039.50 for a total amount of $924,635.92.
Second.
All right, so motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, I'll call to vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next we go to public comments. Would anyone wish to speak to any of the agenda items that are on tonight's agenda? All right, we will move forward then to administrator's report, the civil rights compliance review update.
All right, I just wanted to bring you up to speed. Our deadline for documentation being entered was April 15th, and we have submitted everything that we had here, and I just want to take a moment to thank the many people who came together to pull this for us, pull it off. It was a lot of looking and searching and digging up some old stuff and some new stuff, so, and I may miss somebody, so if I do, Jen, will you remind me if you think of somebody? First of all, I want to say thank you, Jen West. She did a big amount of the work getting things uploaded and into the documents. Carrie Eisen as well, all the things board level, Renee Schoff and Lisa Wales, Ryan Bach, Justin Zeus, oh, who am I missing?
Nikki.
Maney.
Nikki Maney did a lot of the data for us. Carrie Volk helped with the special ed and some of the compliance pieces that we needed there. A real heavy load fell on Ryan Bach's shoulders. Caleb, thank you for helping us get things together with scholarships and with the different organizations we belong to. It went very in-depth as to everything that we belong to and how things are monitored and procedures, so I can't express enough how the team came together and helped get this done, so thank you, everybody. Now, where we're at currently is on May 4th, they will do some online interviews with staff, and then on May 11th, they will be on site for the day, and they'll be interviewing some students, some more staff, walking the physical layout of the building, and then compiling their findings, and that report will be given to us sometime in late June, and then we will have a year to make corrective actions.
All right, okay, I know it was very exhaustive as far as all the amount of things that you had to go through and gather data on, and it sounds like you had a great team to work with, so.
We did.
Excellent. All right, next to new business, May regular board meeting date, May 17th, 2023 at 4:30 PM.
Right, and the reason we're doing the 4:30 meeting is this is the meeting that generally falls the same evening as the senior awards night, and it seems to have worked out pretty well to start at 4:30. Does that work for everybody yet this year? That way, I think there's a parent maybe who would like to be present. Or two or three.
I'm sure my son would like me to.
Yeah. So that will be the plan, that we will begin early then, and then we will wrap up and make sure we are in there so we can enjoy the festivities.
All right, so it is different in time, so we should set a motion to approve that change of time.
I'll make the motion to approve the new meeting date for May 17th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Second.
All right. Any other questions? Does it pretty much work at everybody's schedule?
Yes.
Okay, good. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Next we go to the spring Northern Lakes Conference admin meeting date of May 11th, 2023.
Okay, this is, has started up again last year was the first time where the administrators have tried down to bring their board members together with the other Northern Lakes Conference school boards and school board members and administrators, and it's a real nice evening. It's going to be held again at Charlie's Lakeside in Crandon, and speaker is going to be Ben Niehaus, he was last year. After a lot of discussion, we felt it was a really good fit for us. Ben is very active now in the WASB and as the lobbyist and doing other work for us, and he has the most up-to-date, up-to-the-minute information, and Patrick Mans may also be joining him as he's doing some work with them as well. So what I really need to know is if you could let me know within the next couple of days if you would be interested in attending, then I can go ahead and work to get those reservations made with Larry Palabiki. The networking starts at 5:00, the dinner is at 6:00, and then Ben starts speaking at 6:30, and the speaker in time is about an hour long. I believe we wrapped up about 7:30 or so last year.
All right, and if we have more than two board members, we'll have to do a posting on that, and so, and so next couple of days we'll get that information to you.
Sounds great.
Very good. Next, going to consider approval of personnel report on new hires and resignations.
Okay, for resignations, we have Steve Grisinski, head volleyball coach, Michelle Brown, head girls' basketball coach, Cara Miller, 7th grade boys' basketball coach. In hirings, we have Ben Wales as an assistant JV baseball coach.
All right, someone prepared to make a motion to approve personnel report?
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. And thanks to all the coaches that have put their time and effort into coaching their great students, and yeah, thank you. Next, we go to consider approval of policy 345.6, high school graduation requirements, second reading, formerly known as policy 3231.
Okay, this is coming back for your second reading. As Justin and Mr. Basco had explained in previous meetings, and on last month, we looked a little bit deeper at it, we have brought forward bringing personal finance as a half credit requirement. It pairs nicely with the child and parenting. If you've been paying attention at all to the legislative, that's up for discussion right now. There seems to be a lot of movement that the state is looking to formalize with that becoming a requirement, so it's very timely. More importantly, it is, I believe, very much the right thing to do to prepare our kids for future financial adulthood and helping them with anything they can be prepared with as they go out into that big world. So it's before you again, it's just to be reread and reviewed with you to then go ahead and make the formal motion to approve this after the second reading. If there are any questions, Justin is here, or I can answer anything?
All right, someone prepared to make a motion to approve our new policy?
I'll make a motion to approve policy 345.6, high school graduation credit requirement as stated.
I'll hold a second.
Okay, motion by Michelle and second by Alicia. Any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Next we go to graduation slash service awards ceremony dates.
Okay, I can't believe this time of year is here already.
Yeah.
But I really appreciate the principals and Jen, everybody getting the information together for you to see it in one place here on board docs. So just as a quick review, the senior awards ceremony is May 17th at 7:00 PM, that's in the auditorium, and then the Three Lakes High School awards ceremony is on May 25th at 9:30 AM, and then, of course, our graduation is on Friday, May 26th at 7:00 PM. The Three Lakes Elementary Awards Ceremony is June 1st at 2:00 PM, and the Sugar Camp Graduation Award Ceremony is on June 2nd at 9:30 AM. The Three Lakes Junior High Awards Ceremony and 8th grade graduation is June 2nd at 10:45 AM, and just again to clarify, the last day of school is an early dismissal on June 2nd, and the dismissal times are approximately 12:20 PM for Three Lakes Elementary, 12:25 for the Junior High High School, and 12:40 for Sugar Camp. And Jen has gotten that on the calendar all updated for us, so I know a lot of our families are trying to juggle being at many places, and it works. I've done the circuit, you've got just time to spare to get from one to the other, but it all works out, so thank you, everybody, for getting that information out for us.
So Terry, which of the ceremonies do we have awards that we'll be presenting to?
For service awards?
Yeah.
I thought we weren't. Just one high school? Just one high school at this point?
Okay, and that would be the May, it's in the morning, 9:30? Is that the 9/11 awards? Is that, is it on that date?
It would be, I think, on the 25th.
Right.
It would be the ones that happen during the school day.
May 25th at 9:30, could be the high school.
Okay, so, and that's the only one that we have, an award that we're presenting?
I think so, I will double check and can let you know if that's different.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have that one, that is an opportunity for a board member to do a presentation?
I have a question in regards to that. You know, while the board is elected, are we the best person to present that award? We don't necessarily work hand-in-hand every day with the people receiving that service award. I would agree that somebody could be there to hand the award, but I think that the presentation, the speaking part should be done by possibly administration that deals with them.
I think this is traditionally how it's been done, but I don't think anybody would be opposed to that.
Yeah, I think it's probably more of a tradition thing, more than anything, that the board is recognizing the service of an employee for their dedication and service to the district.
And as I said, they could be there, they could be the one to present the award, but as far as the speaking portion, you know, the thinking that, you know, we don't know their accomplishments, we don't know their, as well, we don't know that, you know, what they did on a day-to-day for, to serve the school district as much. That's where I think that the speaking portion might come better from, from an administrative member.
I think it's kind of nice to connect us with them. I mean, I've done it before, and I've done a little research and kind of taken some time to get to know the person I was presenting to, and some I knew very well and some I didn't, and I don't know, that's just my thought, is I kind of like that connection of the board with the staff, because I feel like there's not a lot of, I don't know, this is my thought.
Yeah, and that's fine, just, it was a question. I mean, I know it's tough to be, sometimes be thrown in, and you can do as much research as you can, but sometimes it doesn't do them justice either, so, because you might miss something, but, but I have no problem leaving it as is.
I'd be happy to do it if someone is willing and want to, I guess I would definitely step aside, but if you're okay with it, I can.
That's good.
Jump in, okay. All right, so you can put me down for that. So that's the only one that we have a service award other than handing out the diplomas at graduation.
Right.
And. We probably have someone that would be very interested in doing that, I would assume, right?
I would love it. I'm not crying, not. I might probably not cry, I don't know. I would love it, I would be honored to do it again.
Yeah.
Those are my kids.
It's always been kind of a, I guess, a tradition if a board member has a graduate, that they can be the ones to at least hand out the diploma of their own, but I think it would be good just for you to stay up there, and you probably know quite a few of the other students as well, so, yeah, so do we need to supply any Kleenex or anything like that?
I'm gonna have to hold it together, Stacy. I'm gonna try to get it all out ahead of time.
You working that now, huh?
Probably volleyball A.
Practicing at home.
I'm hearing them.
All right, okay, so we're gonna put Stacy down for graduation.
Thank you.
And if there are any other rewards that you do notice afterwards, just, I guess, you can alert us.
Yeah, send a group email.
What's that?
I'll send a group email.
Yeah, so, okay, so we should be covered then, right? All right, very good.
Junior graduation.
Junior, what's that?
For diplomas.
Junior high graduation. Anybody have any graduates in there? Not yet? Anybody wish to hand out diplomas, I guess, so to speak?
I cannot, my Nicolay students are graduating that day, I would not be able to attend.
Okay, and that we've had administrators hand those out in the past, right?
I'm absolutely willing to do it if it's okay with Justin.
Okay.
Sure, I like going to those parties.
So.
Yeah, we got, some of us have 6th grade graduation.
Oh, no. You're just gonna be a mess, Stacy.
Yeah, yes, and that who does something for Nicolay on Saturday, so you gotta get in on it, I mean, really? I can't really survive all this.
All right, so you guys got that one covered?
Yep, we have it covered.
There you go. I think we got them covered, thanks for the reminder, Josh.
Yeah, that was Jen, I just heard her.
Okay, I can get on to the statement, the board canvassers, and certificate of the election. That Stacy?
Yep, all right, so the tabular statement of votes, Hiles had five for Klein, two write-ins for a total of seven votes casted, Monaco had 78 for Klein, zero write-ins for a total of 78, Peel had 24 for Klein, zero write-ins for 24 votes, Stella had zero, Klein, zero write-ins for zero votes, Sugar Camp had 508 for Klein, 10 write-ins for a total of 518, Three Lakes had 662 for Klein, five for write-in, and 667 votes. And. To all whom these presents shall come, I, Stacy Klein, clerk of the school district of Three Lakes, do hereby certify that Stacy Klein, as appears from the official canvas of the votes cast at a spring election held on the 4th day of April 2023, was duly elected as a school board member of said district for a term of three years beginning on the 24th day of April 2023 and ending on April 26th, 2026, given under my hand and official seal the clerk's office this 11th day of April 2023. Stacy Klein, District Clerk, School District of Three Lakes.
All right, so just read off the total cast votes for us, please, Stacy.
I can't, I can't, I must scroll back. Oh, there, it wasn't, sorry, sorry. 1,294 total votes.
Okay, and 1277 for you and 17 of scattering.
Yeah.
Write-ins, okay, well, congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Very good. Anything else on your part?
No.
You're done, okay, perfect, thank you for that.
Yep.
Next we go to consider approval of the boys' golf co-op with Phelps for years 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025. Charlie?
Yep, this is a co-op that we've had for quite some time now, this is just a renewal. Due June 1st, I believe, so I was trying to get out in front of it. I was hoping not to be able to, maybe I would skip the maybe, but it doesn't look like I'm skipping. So, so I'm bringing it forward to you guys, hopefully for a renewal.
All right, and what's the participation been on Phelps?
So, right now, we do not have any boys that are golfing in Phelps. We do have some, one? One in the middle school. One in the middle school program. It's one of those programs that it doesn't bring us up or down a division.
Yeah.
We've had some in the past, we just currently do not have one this year.
Okay, all right. All right, someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the boys' golf co-op with Phelps for the 2023, 2024, 2024, 2025 seasons.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Charlie, when's the last time we had somebody in that program?
Um, one point in time, I think Todd had, we had, what, I think I brought three or four kids, three, four, six years ago when I was with them.
That was, that was the last of it?
I think one of them kept going after I came here. So we did have a senior, and I think one of them continued coming. I think this is the second consecutive year that we haven't had anybody on the high school team.
Any other questions? I'll call the motion to a vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes four one. Next we go to consider approval of the boys' track and field co-op with Phelps for 2023, 2024, and 2024 through 2025.
Again, this is a renewal. We currently do not have any boys from Phelps on our track team, however, we have, last year, they had a couple, and the year before that, they had two, this year, we just do not have any. So again, it's a, it's a renewal, it's something we've had in the past. Again, the track divisional alignment allows a little bit something to live in three countries, so it's not gonna be this way or another, whether we have them or not.
Okay, all right, okay, someone prepared to make a motion on that one?
I'll make a motion to approve the boys' track and field co-op with Phelps for the 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025 seasons.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Alicia. Any other questions on that? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Going to consider approval of the girls' track and field co-op with Phelps for years 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025.
Okay, we presently have two girls on the team, which is good, because their numbers are small. I think we have, what, five with that altogether? Or six, six altogether on the girl's side. You know, we've, one girl's a junior, she's been on there every year since I've been here. We usually get one to two girls that do try track every year from Phelps, and again, it's same divisional alignments as the boys, it doesn't hurt us whether we have their enrollment combined with us or not, so, just asking for approval.
All right, very good. Someone prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to approve the girls' track and field co-op with Phelps for 2023, 2024, and 2024, 2025.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Any other questions? Call to vote, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes five zero. Next we go to the Washington DC spring trip for 2023.
Oh. Maybe I'll just come over here. Now, do you need my support?
Yes.
It's my emotional support.
Some emotional support.
Uh-oh.
Get over there, boy.
Paul dance.
This girl, like it is.
Nobody said they had good timing. Starts from day one.
Am I just going? Okay, so my class of twenty twenty-four got to go on our DC trip finally from eighth grade. We got to go in eleventh grade. And our first day, we took a flight out of Milwaukee, and we got to go to DC. And the first thing that we got to do was the Smithsonian's, which my group went to the natural science and the space and air. And then after that, we had to go to Ford's Theater, and then we had to go across the street to the room where he died. And then we went to dinner at a place called The Fish Market. And then to end off the night, we had ghost tours in Alexandria. And then to start off day two, we had Arlington Cemetery tours, which was very rainy but really fun. And we got to see the changing of the guard, which was a really cool experience. And after that, we took the bus to see Iwo Jima and the Air Force memorials. And then we had a stop at the White House, which it finally cleared up and was sunny. And then we got to go see the Pentagon, which obviously there's no pictures. And then the nine eleven memorial. After that, we spent a couple, like, I think a few hours at the Holocaust museum. And then we got to see, I don't remember the abbreviations, uh, okay, Junior FDR and Jefferson memorials. And we did a lot of walking around this, like, huge lake during that. And during that time, we got to see all the cherry blossoms because they were in bloom, and it was their last weekend in bloom. And then we had dinner at Uno's, which was really good pizza. And then we got to go to the John F. Kennedy Center for Performing Arts, which was a really cool experience because they had, like, a lot of hands-on things that we could do.
So I put out a plea to the students, um, just to get their feedback. I think that this is kind of a life-changing experience for a lot of them. Many of them don't leave the North Woods. At least half a dozen have never flown on a plane. So it was a lot of, like, this is what TSA is. I had to throw away some things because, I mean, it's a learning curve. So I think that it's just a very interesting learning experience that we provide for these students. So a lot of these things were the ones that they kind of took away from it. They were saying they came together as a group, and these were just experiences they're never, never gonna forget. So, uh, this was in front of the White House.
Okay, moving on to day three. So we started off our day to a long bus ride to Gettysburg. And we had a bus tour there, and we got to, like, get off at some points. And our tour guide was really cool, and he, like, walked us through some things that, like, other tour guides probably would never show you. And after that, we went back to the main building. We had lunch, and then we got to walk through the museum. And then they showed us a film about Gettysburg. And then we got to go into this thing called the Cyclorama, which was this big room with a giant mural, like, all the way around it. And they had, like, this little show to go with it.
It was about Pickens Church.
And then after that, we kind of went memorial hopping, and we went to World War II. We didn't go to the Washington Memorial, but, like, we were really close to it. We got to go to the Korean Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, and then the Vietnam Memorial. And those are all, like, really cool experiences. And then after that, we took a bus to the World War I Memorial. And then to end our night, we went to Bubba De Beppo's, which is an Italian restaurant.
This was at the World War II Memorial, and this, the last time that I went to Washington DC, I was in, like, elementary school. So this is actually a new addition since I've been there. So the World War II Memorial is fairly new. I feel like within the last ten years. And we found the Wisconsin pillar. Every state is represented by pillars. So we were able to find that one and take a nice picture outside of there. Once again, just some things that the students were talking about. They loved the Smithsonian museums. Um, I think that they liked the independence. We were basically like, here are six museums. Go. Meet back here. So it, a lot of the intention of this trip is to have that independence, that kids are able to be like, hey, this is a really big city, and we can still make our way. We can find ourselves. Obviously, it was the actual educational thing, you are a sponge for, it was four days. Um, and the kids were talking about the walking tour. We went to memorials. I think that we put on twenty-five miles. Twenty-five point one is what we covered. One day it was nine miles. It was a lot of walking. I think one of the, the, the feedback that I got most prominently was the fact that maybe we could spend an extra day to just not have to do speed walking. So many miles in a day. But part of it was that we ran into a lot of interruptions with the cherry blossom festival. It turns out a lot of people come in for that. They reroute traffic. So instead of having us get on and off the bus constantly, we got off of the bus, and then we just walked. So, yeah, it was good for us. Well, they handled it fine.
And we wrapped up our day with the Eisenhower Memorial, which is in the bottom right corner. And then we made an extra stop to the Botanical Gardens, which was personally my favorite because we got very little time in it, but it was a really good experience. And then we didn't get to go inside the Library of Congress, but we got to look on the outside. And then we stopped into the Capitol Building, which was really cool, and we got to walk around in there. We had lunch, and we had a tour. And then we took our flight home.
This also included the Supreme Court. That's the picture in the top left. So, yeah, a lot of these things you aren't able to necessarily go into unless you have timed tickets and stuff like that. So we didn't have, and the Washington, Washington Memorial, we didn't get to go up on that just because we didn't have the time, the tickets. Everything is very timed. Things have changed a lot since COVID, so just with the different protocols and stuff like that. That, the statue of the man is Bob Lefollette. That was the Wisconsin statue in the Capitol statues. But our tour guide did not pronounce Lefollette. We tried to be polite and not correct. No, this was the lady. Yep. Uh, and this is us in front of the Capitol Building. So I think one of our students, Brady, just had a really good experience because he had been taught, he had talked to his grandpa about it. And his grandpa talked about the cherry blossoms and talked about all the amazing things. And then Brady was able to see that when we went out there. So just kind of the whole full circle effect that kids were able to get. I love the equity piece that we have put into place, that you have helped put into place because many of these kids would never have gotten this opportunity if they had to pay for it fully out of pocket. So I'm thankful. Don't want to get. Here we go. Okay. I just had to point out that Heather and I are twins. Turns out. And these were just a couple of really cute pictures, I think, that needed to be included. The Air Force, uh, the Air Force Memorial was the one with the cool. They're supposed to look like contrails going up. And then that was a Arlington. And then Herm got on the P A system on the way home. So she was keeping us all awake as we were driving back from Milwaukee, so. Trying to get my practice in as a tour guide. Yes. Uh, a really cool thing was the fact that we have a foreign exchange student named Iga, and she was even able to come along with us. So, I mean, she came from Poland, and here she is, and now we're like, hey, great, you should go to Washington DC. And she just had a really great experience, I think. Very interesting to see her perspective at the Holocaust museum. Like, how is this taught in Poland? Uh, because that Poland is obviously greatly affected by that. So, um, she's a great girl. She's a cool kid if you get to meet her, so. So we want to say thank you very much for all of your support that you have given this class, but all the classes, classes prior as well. So we thank you very much. Thank you. Questions?
Got a question to be asked.
Yes.
This is the first year that we've had juniors go. Prior was always eighth graders. And I know you didn't get a chance to experience it in the eighth grade, but do you think back and reflect on what it would have been like if you would have gone three years ago?
I've heard many other, like, classes that have gone saying they wish they would have gone junior year because they thought they would have, like, remember it more, appreciate it more, and stuff like that. So I'm glad I got to go junior year.
My brother went his eighth grade year, and I took a lot of his experience with me. And I feel like I had a lot better experience because my class was a lot closer. Because when you're in eighth grade, it's only two years with sugar camp. You're, like, mixed. And when you're a junior, you've had a lot of time and a lot of, like, homecomings and stuff together. It's like, you're really close at that point. So I feel like it was just, like, a lot better experience class-wise.
The overwhelming response was that they grew together as a group, which was so nice. Um, and I think that they really do appreciate that they were older. I think just having the maturity of those kids in a big city. I mean, added to everyone's experience because you weren't dealing with behavior issues the whole time. You weren't dealing with kids mouthing off. I mean, just, you weren't dealing with that. You were able to just kind of take it in as learners versus people who are trying to combat behaviors and immaturity. So.
Kids did a great job. It was an excellent group.
So. Yes, so thank you, kids.
Alright, any other questions? Well, thank you for the presentation. Glad you guys had a great trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we go to the winter sports report. Charlie?
Alright, um, spend some time. It feels still like winter though.
Yeah.
So I guess I could start. I think you guys had a chance to look at these documents. Um, I could start with the girls. I don't know where you, how they got, or maybe it's your view. Um, the girls overall had a very good season. They were fifteen and nine overall. They were six and four in the conference. Uh, as Michelle states here, um, they only had four returners from last year, so they were a very young team. So the expectations this year were not maybe as high as last year. Last year, they ended up being co-conference champs. Um, they did break home a regional championship. This year, it was more on growth, I think. They wanted to get some of these freshmen moved along and brought up. And some of them were kind of forced into varsity roles early on, and, uh, some of them responded pretty well, and some of them there were some bumps and bruises along the way. And there was some, uh, some good things, there was a bad thing. So, um, she talks a little bit about, you know, wins and losses along the way. Couple of highlight wins, I would say. I think beating Rhymelander here at home was a pretty good accomplishment. And then, um, I believe, I think for me, I didn't say Andy. I think that was my favorite game. I think they were down by fifteen or sixteen at halftime and came back and won in a very close game. And they had a really kind of a big center that, eh, we didn't know what we were gonna do, and she was kind of eating us up in the first half. And, uh, they came up with some answers and responded well and came back with a big win. So, um, throughout the year, uh, there were some, like I said, some good things. Conference-wise, all conference players, uh, we ended up with a first-temer and a second-temer and an honorable mention. First team was, uh, Cali Volk, second team was Carter Reivers, and honorable mention was, uh, Kaya Zeus. So we have Jenna and Kaya coming back next year. And, um, we've got a whole pile of sophomores coming in. And, uh, with the co-op with Phelps, we'll have a couple more, uh, coming in. I know this, coaches are pretty excited about, uh, some people that we're bringing in. So, um, they did end up losing in Niagara in, uh, a game that, I don't know, just, they just didn't see themselves that way that night. So, um, it was a disappointing loss, but, uh, you know, I guess, except for one team, everybody's season ends in a loss. So ours ended maybe a little bit earlier than they hoped. But in all, I think it was a good thing. It was a good year. Pleased with the growth of the freshmen. Um, I was, I think the coaches were very happy with the guidance of our juniors and seniors to help, you know, bring those freshmen along and accept them into the group. And, uh, I think it was a, a really good season for the girls.
Very good.
Uh, they started with seventeen and ended up with sixteen. Uh, next, I have boys' basketball. Boys' basketball, um, ended up seventeen and eight. Uh, they were eight and two in the conference. They were second in the conference this year behind, they lost to Florence, uh, two games. Again, I think they have one senior on the team. I mean, or two seniors on the team, I'm sorry. Not a very, this group, not a very, uh, heavy upperclassman group. Our juniors kind of helped us there. We had a number of juniors. Um, as far as our seniors, we had two, um, freshmen and sophomore. We had, uh, five from each. Wins along the way, um, I guess I could speak, uh, along here. A game that I thought we might have, I mean, we started our season against Northern Pines. It was a very, very good team. They kind of thumped up on us a little bit this year, but I think the roles will, they're a very strong group. Uh, will be very strong next year. Anigo was a loss here that I thought maybe, um, maybe, I don't know, that was a way, was the loss here. Did Tom watch or was it? Anyway, there was a loss here to a bigger school that I thought would have been, um, a little bit closer game. But they grew. Under new coach Brad Volkman, everybody, they kind of, uh, responded well. Grew to his, um, coachability or coaching. And throughout the season, responded and did much better along the way. So, uh, they brought home a regional championship and lost first round in the sectionals to, uh, Gibraltar, yes. So Gibraltar, um, was a state qualifier last year, and Gibraltar did end up losing their next game in Wausau. So they did not make state, but they're a, they're a talented team, big team. So, um, but looking for a lot of good things next year of our boys' basketball team. I can, I can probably say that they could very easily be conference and regional champs next year and make a pretty deep run in the playoffs. So some real good things there. Numbers-wise, um, numbers-wise with the boys, with our small graduating class, we should have a pretty big group of eighth graders coming in. And we're already putting in place some JV two games to keep everybody happy with some playing time and minutes and things like that. So, um, with our numbers this year, we tried JV two, and we did do it. But there were nights where JV two was five and the JV was six. So we were able to just kind of pull it off. Um, but I think next year, numbers will be a little bit more, a little, uh, hole deeper, and we'll be able to pull off three levels pretty easily. Moving on to wrestling. For wrestling, we had two. We have, um, a sophomore and a senior. And, um, I wish I could say we had some middle school numbers coming up, but right now, currently, we did not have a seventh or an eighth grader. And we did have some sixth graders, which will be middle school next year. Um, our youth numbers are, are looking better. But right now, our numbers in wrestling are struggling. So, um, the co-op with Leonino has been a savior, kind of a godsend with us. And, um, that almost went away this year, but they decided to keep us, um, one of the year because the divisional lines may have pushed them up. Things changed there a little bit. With their growth of their two schools. But, um, with that, we did have Gus Fink was a all-conference selection. And, um, he was a second place finisher at sectionals, which allowed him to compete at state. So it's been a while since we've had a, well, I should say, actually two years in a row now with Pearson and Gus, uh, state qualifiers. However, at state, he, he lost his first match and the opponent that he faced lost his next match. So with that, Gus did not get a second match at state, unfortunately. So, but, um, he enjoyed his ride, he enjoyed the year. Um, and, uh, Gus is one of those athletes and anybody who's coached Gus or watched him grow as a, as a young man, this is a really good thing for him. Um, if you would have asked me four to five years ago that Gus Fink would have been competing at state wrestling, I, I don't know if I said yeah, but it just pays a, the tributes to the work he's put in, the dedication and to the craft that this is something he really wanted. So, and he went out and got it. So, good for Gus and, uh, you know, good for, good for our coaching staff. Seth and John did a nice job. When you have a heavyweight and your next person is at 150 pounds, finding practice partners that is a safe thing to do is, uh, was hard. But we had, um, a couple of people come in and help them out with that. So it was, uh, they were good at kind of finding people for Gus to wrestle with. Any questions about our winter sports? Um, I guess the one other thing I probably should include, but it's really not our, is hockey. So we did have one boy and one girl in the Rhimelander programs this year. So Tyler Keating is, uh, this would be his, well, next year's going to be the fourth year there. And we did have a freshman come in, Julia Iker, at the, uh, hockey level, which I think we guys improved next year would be at tennis. So, uh, hoping that she'll come back and do that again. It sounds like she will, so. But they spoke well with their experiences.
Very good. Yeah. Anybody have any questions at all? Charlie, at the end of the year, do we typically look at our overall participation and compare that?
For numbers?
Yeah.
Like overall?
Yeah.
I, I think, actually, the last person that has asked me to, uh, what some of that was, was Kathy. And I think I did that in 17 and 18. And when we looked at that, it looked like about 70% of our kids were involved in either athletics, drama, band, or chorus, um, overall. I could do that again and kind of figure it out, but I, I think it is fairly high. Our, I would say our senior class maybe doesn't have the greatest participation levels. But, um, our freshmen and our juniors are very high.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it'd be interesting to see how that compares over the years.
I can put that together.
See what kind of trends there have been and et cetera, so.
Do you want to break it down by class or just by, just by total?
I would say overall.
Okay, well, I can do it. I'll, I'll break it down by class. That'll, that'd be probably the easiest and then I can do it overall.
Okay.
So, I can have that.
Very good. Thank you.
It would be interesting to see because, you know, you look at the senior class and their freshman and sophomore years, we weren't doing sports. So then for those kids that have to jump into sports as a junior, senior, I think that's what we're seeing, you know? Because they're a great group of kids.
Yeah.
And I know a lot of them play, but I, you know, I, I, I mean, my son in it, for example. And so, I don't know, just observation.
I think we see more, um, I see more freshmen, sophomores, and juniors, uh, being multi-sport athletes. And, and seniors, I see a lot of maybe one-sport athletes sometimes.
Yeah.
But again, I think that we lost a lot.
Oh, yeah.
To that freshman sophomore and they weren't able to do it. Just observation. Put a little asterisk.
All right, very good. Uh, moving on, next we have the School Forest Camp Three project update.
Uh, the only update that I have for you this month is that next week on April 25th, uh, there will be a pre-hearing held with the DNR. And the district does have an insurance representative, an attorney that will be present gathering information on our behalf. Um, it was determined by the DNR administration that the district does have a vested interest and should have somebody present at the table.
All right. Okay, thank you for that report. Uh, next we go to district-related positive happenings. Crying babies are.
Sounds like the parents in class are doing great.
That doesn't fit you. We want them happy.
Since I don't hear anybody going, I'm going to start. I know these sort of things aren't so much of a surprise anymore because we do such a good job with social media, put these out there. Um, but we can celebrate the fact that we've got two W I A scholar athletes, um, in Cali Volk and Gus Fink. That's a really big deal. Eight hundred and forty-one seniors are nominated in the state of Wisconsin. Thirty-two get to be finalists.
Yeah.
We have two. We have two. Just so proud of, of both of those kids, both those men adults. They're super hard workers. Like, they didn't get to this spot by just coasting on talent. They're, they're academically talented, they're athletically talented, yes, for sure. But there are seldom days where you won't see them, either in the weight room or, uh, somewhere connecting with some teacher to get, working on, uh, uh, like, these two are model citizens for us. And so let's celebrate the fact that they've been recognized at the state level in a big way. Because of eight hundred and forty-one, that's a lot of really solid seniors that are, uh, submitted, you know? Two, two from each school, uh, every high school in the state of Wisconsin.
Piggyback on that a little bit. Chamos Walt was here today to interview them and I got to tag along. And I like, I listen in usually when they're interviewing. It was so fun to watch Gus, like, just come on. He, he was so happy today, you know, like just to see him. And, and she kept saying like, oh, and you do this and you did this to both of the kids, you know? Like, and they, they are so involved in so many things in the school. So it was really neat to see them, uh, get to answer questions and, and be the stars today. So that was fun.
We show him well today, huh?
This is something that we've known for, geez, a month. And they're like, don't say anything. So I, you got to tell the parents and the kids and, and he just couldn't wait. And he's like, Gus has been kind of shadowed by Emily a little bit. And this is one thing that Emily didn't get. She would have been a very strong candidate, but they decided not to do the program that year, um, because of COVID. And, uh, he's like, just like.
Yeah, awesome. It is quite an accomplishment, as Justin had pointed out. Yeah. Reflective of the district, no doubt, the parents and the students. Yeah, well done. Uh, any others?
Sugar camp had their geography bee shortly after spring break. And we had a really long program. It was pretty impressive to watch. It took almost an hour and a half and I was running out of questions. They did an amazing job. So top finisher was Lockland Mao, and second was Billy Leach here, and then Zoe took third. So, but it was, uh, it was impressive because we were really deep in the question.
All right. Okay, we can move on then to the W A S B correspondence updates.
Um, I have two things. The first one is that on, um, Thursday, May 18th, there is going to be at the CISA nine, a Essential Elements of Governance. So if any of you as board members would be interested in attending, we would get you registered. Networking is at six, dinner's at 6:30, and then there's, then there's a presentation from seven to 8:30. And it goes through, um, just really the, the roles of governance and coming through CISA nine and working with W A S B. I'm sure it would be a good program. So the information is here if you are interested. And then another thing that we've got in front of us is, um, and I don't want to scare Alicia because it's like, ooh, an assignment right off the get-go. But, um, we're due to do our school perception survey. And what this is, is it's run through W A S B. And it helps board members establish where you personally feel you are as a board member in different areas of governance. And it's okay to be at the very basic level. Everybody starts somewhere. And then what they do is they take a look at it and they do data for us and tell us where we are collectively, where you as a board are stronger, or maybe where there's areas that we need some more guidance. So I have a copy for you and, um, it's due by, uh, June 30th. I was hoping that in the next month you could do this on your own. And I got the instructions for you. And, um, then we can go forward with W A S B to compute our results. And if you do have any questions or get stuck, feel free to reach out to me. I'll help a little bit. Um, I took a look at it before and it's, it's not too bad. It's not too tight a task, so. So thank you for that. And that's what I have, Mike.
Very good. Okay, thank you for that information. All right, and we'll finish out with an executive session adjourning, uh, part A. Adjourn to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statues 19.851F to consider medical, social, or personal histories of a specific student, which if discussed in public would likely to have substantial adverse effect. Part B. Adjourn to executive session pursuing, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statues 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically to consider staffing levels, individual staff contract, contracts, hiring of staff and or resignation slash retirement of staff. Part C. Adjourn to executive session, Wisconsin State Statues 19.851G to confer with legal counsel who is rendering oral advice with respect to potential litigation pertaining to the school forest trap shooting range. And I'll take a motion to adjourn for those three parts in the executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to executive session. Second?
All right, so a motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. And I'll take a roll call vote. Stacy?
Aye.
Josh?
Aye.
Alicia?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.